Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council meeting at the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. Item number one is called Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. If you're here to speak on items designated as public hearing items later on in the agenda, please know that you will have an opportunity to speak when I introduce those items at the time of their public hearing. The city council will need to complete the other items of business leading up to those items, so we appreciate your patience. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item and you haven't filled out a speaker card yet, please make sure to fill out and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. I would now like to invite everyone who's able and willing to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council must consider in order to conduct city business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We're now going to play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you so much. We're now going to play a video conveying the city of Tempe's land acknowledgement statement.
We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the native people who have inhabited this landscape since time immemorial. These ancestral lands of the Oatham, known as Pima, Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors extend far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Oatham of the Salt River Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Gila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
Thank you. Next up, item number four, the meeting minutes. Tonight will be assisted by council member Hodge, who's wearing a lovely hat. Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to submit approval for items 4A1 to 4A2.
Okay, it's been submitted by councilmember Hodge for approval. Do I have a second? Seconded by councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. Next up, we have item 4B, acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes. Councilmember Hodge.
I would like to submit an acceptance for item 4B1 to 4B7.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Do I have a second? Seconded by councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. Next up, we have reports and announcements. I have mayor's reports and announcements I would love to see. Actually, I'm going to do this actually. This is for Captain Don Youngward, Lifetime of Service Recognition Day, but I've got a couple of speakers here before I'm going to ask the council to join me down to the front. So I'm going to call those speakers. The first speaker I have this evening, got in the order, well, in the right order here, is Scott Price. Please come down, state your name and place of residence. We have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm here to speak about Brad and Don, Brad Whitley and Don. I'm going to mess this up. Jungle war. I'm sure we'll be the first or the last ever in his life. And for a proclamation that I'm told there's soon to be, to be read. So I'll just go here. I'm not a firefighter, as you can probably tell, but I've had the pleasure of working with Don and Brad for the last 10 years on firefighter charities and union fundraisers. I've seen firsthand the work that Don and Brad have done for the city and Tempe Fire Rescue specifically, and I've also gotten to know the men that they are. First to the work, through their decade-plus of service, Don and Brad have made Tempe Fire the sought-after department to work for in the state of Arizona. The benefits, training, and relationship with this, with city leadership, any of the people sitting here, is second to none. This is not just my opinion, this is freely told to me and discussed by other firefighters in the state who are also friends of mine. This is a direct result of their work and dedication, Don and Brad. They've also taken firefighter charities to a whole new level from where it was a decade ago, giving back to those Tempeans in need, and I'm grateful to them for that as well. I also have gotten to know the men that they are. Don, Brad, it's been a pleasure and a blessing to work with you both and get a taste of the brotherhood, sisterhood, personhood of your profession. I've seen firsthand how much you have fought for and cared for this city and this fire department. I've also seen it personally, when I faced hardship and adversity, you were some of the first to circle the wagons for me. That's a true test of a man's character, being there for your friends when they need you most. The work you have done will continue to do, and will continue to do, I'm sure, that lives on every day. Your dedication and character have set an extremely high bar. We often don't think about fire paramedics till we need them the most, but when we do, we 100% do. I remember lying in a pool of blood after I sliced my Achilles tendon working a few blocks away on a construction site. And boy, did I, did I need you guys there, and was I grateful that the great men and women of this fire department were there to take me to get the help I needed. We're all grateful for guys like you give so much to make Tempe Fire Rescue the world-class organization that it is. Thank you. On behalf of all Tempe residents, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The next speaker I have this evening is David Leibowitz.
I'll, Mayor, members of council, I will keep it brief, not as brief as the state of the city, but in the ballpark. I distinctly remember when Don became the president of the Tempe Firefighters. And the Tempe Firefighters have been blessed with great leadership for many years with Rich Worth and Don being there. Don has in every possible way exceeded the expectations of all of those around him. His commitment to the members, commitment to the city, to the relationships he's forged with all of you is incredibly sincere, and that is a rare thing in 2023. And I've watched Brad Whitley work tirelessly to build a massive charity effort that has benefited the residents of Tempe in ways that I couldn't even begin to describe. Working with these guys has been really just a tremendous honor. They are the best and brightest of their profession, and they're even better human beings. So I think this proclamation is, it's incredibly warranted. And at the risk of making this sound like, you know, the funeral scene from Huck Finn or something like that, I think this is the beginning of you guys continuing to do great things and finding new ways to serve and new ways to contribute. This isn't really the end of anything. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker I have this evening is our interim deputy city manager, but also our longtime fire chief, Greg Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for giving me an opportunity to speak. Don is a very special person to me, and he's been a part of my life for a very long time. It is with great honor and gratitude that I stand before you today to express my deepest appreciation for the excellent service of Captain Don Youngward as the president of the Professional Firefighters of Arizona and the vice president of the IAFF Local 493, representing Tempe Fire Medical Union members. Captain Youngward has been a champion of our values and a tireless advocate for the well-being of our firefighters. As the fire chief, I have had the privilege of witnessing firsthand the impact Captain Youngward's leadership has had on our union and the entire fire department for 25 years as a trustee and 11 years as our VP. His dedication to excellence, unwavering commitment to the safety and welfare of our firefighters, and his passion for advancing our collective mission have set a standard of excellence that will be remembered for years to come. Under Captain Youngward's guidance, our union has flourished, becoming a united force committing to the highest standards of professionalism and service. His strategic vision and ability to navigate complex challenges have been instrumental in shaping the direction of our department. I know I've been his partner, and in his efforts have contributed significantly to the growth and success we have achieved as a department and as a city. As Captain Youngward steps down from the role of president, we reflect not only on his accomplishments but also on the personal sacrifices and tireless dedication he has demonstrated. The positive change, change is, he has ushered in will have a lasting impact on the culture and effectiveness of our union. On behalf of the entire fire department, I extend my deepest gratitude to Captain Youngward. We recognize the countless hours, the sleepless nights, and the selfless devotion he has given to our department and city. As we bid farewell to him in his presidency only, let us remember the legacy of leadership he leaves behind, a legacy that has strengthened our union, elevated our standards, and enriched the lives of those who serve under our banner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Captain Youngward, for the exceptional service, your unwavering commitment, and the lasting impact you have made on our fire department. More importantly, thank you for the support you've provided me and the friendship we have shared for 30 years. You see, we came on together, and I look forward, sorry, to the next 30. To Brad Whitley, I want to thank you for your 13 years. You have shown the same dedication, you have committed to so much in the way of our charities, to our workforce, and you too will leave a lasting impression. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor, members of council.
I would just like to see, before I move on to council comments, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address Sergeant Ferraro? Please come on down, state your name and place of residence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Rob Ferraro, and I serve as the president of the Tempe Officers Association, representing the nearly 350 active Tempe officers, sergeants, and detention supervisors. Over the many years Don and I have been the elected leaders of our associations, we have experienced many ups and many downs, both professionally and personally. Through them all, Don has taught me how to approach the downs with courage and the highs with professionalism. Don taught me many important lessons over the past several years. From those lessons brought gains and pay and benefits to my membership. The most important lessons came in the way of relationship building. I was always so impressed with how Don was friends first with city leadership. With any pressing issue of the times, Don was able to relate that issue to a funny story with this person or that person, all because his leadership had a foundation of friendship and relationships. I am proud and fortunate to have had Don mentor and guide me as we served as presidents together. I am most proud, however, of Don's friendship. When my daughter was born six years ago, we had a complication which left us with fear, uncertainty, and us rushing to the nearest hospital. Many days later of sleeping on the hospital floor and still not knowing, Jana and I were greeted by two smiling, comforting faces, Chief Reese and Don Youngward. It meant everything to us and is a moment in time I will, I will never forget. But that's Don. He cares most about his friends and family and is someone who seemingly will go the extra mile for anyone, although his view of that extra mile is basically a Tuesday or any other day of the week. General Eisenhower once said, "The supreme quality of leadership is unquestionable integrity." It takes a very special person to lead an association, manage relationships, care about what you do, and do it with the highest level of integrity all of the time. Firefighters and police officers in Tempe have an incredible debt to you professionally for the gains and pay and benefits and the relationships forged along the way. It is your unquestionable integrity, your depth of humility, and your longstanding loyalty which exemplified your leadership. Congratulations, Don, on your proclamation today. Our Tempe cops applaud you and all of your accomplishments. You're a true leader and one of my best friends. Thank you, Don.
Excellent. Before I move on to council comments, just want to see if there's anyone else in the audience who'd wish to address us on this item. If so, please get my attention. All right, with that said, I'm going to move to council comments, and I'm going to start first with Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, I'm not going to talk very long because I'm going to have a hard time. But I just really want to thank Brad for all of their services. They've been wonderful, good friends, great employees. I've known Don for 25 years, and I'm just really, really proud of everything that they've accomplished, and they are truly great men. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Brad and, and Don.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Councilmember Hodge.
I just want to say, I don't call him Don, I call him Donny. Donny, you have supported me beyond city council. You were one of the first people who supported me on governing board. You thought, you realized how much it meant to educate our students and have the right people there. You have, you're not only a colleague to me, you are a friend for life, and I love you, and we were lucky to have you. We were very lucky to have you. No one can replace you. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me next go to councilmember DeVarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Donny, Brad, I mean, with all my heart, just an outstanding job you have done for Tempe Fire Department and this city. It is, it goes without question, you know, throughout the valley that you constructed probably the premier fire department that I'm proud of, being a Phoenix firefighter. Also, very proud of what the city has done in terms of taking care of their members, but not only that, the partnership that you have constructed across the valley is by far the biggest thing that I've ever seen. Tempe is on the map. Tempe is a place for fire, for employees, for representation. You are the trademark, so to speak, of how to be a union president, and I appreciate everything you've done for the members, but it also has translated across the valley. And Brad, you know, you also being there, part of Don, backing him up, being part of this victory that we all share with what our Tempe firefighters have, has been outstanding. And Brad, that's a lot of hard work on your side too, because I know the, obviously, it's a group effort, it's a team effort going across the board, and it's not just you guys, there's other instrumental people within the department that actually helped get the job done, and I understand that. But guys, I just want to tell you, thank you. And Donny, I mean, me and you, I mean, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Rich. You guys really encouraged me, and you guys really helped me get through this process being a council member. I'll never forget the gratitude of being where I'm at right now, so I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember DeVarro. Next up, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Donny, Brad, it's bittersweet that I say this, and you know I don't write stuff down, so I'm just going to speak. Your service to the city is, both of you, is, is without measure. Now, people don't, I don't think people appreciate just exactly how hard it is to be a union chief. You know, but the fact of the matter is, Donny was a ruthless negotiator who fought tooth and nail and advocated beyond any, any reasonable measure for every single benefit that the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department enjoys today. Because of you and the work that you and Brad have done, not only does Tempe Fire Medical Rescue have a stellar world-class reputation, but it has some of the best benefits and pay in the Valley of the Sun. So, yeah, I'm incredibly proud of the work you have done. I'm incredibly proud to call you a confidant, but more importantly, to Mr. Leibowitz's point, a friend. You supported me very early during my first race, when maybe you're maybe a little bit skeptical, and you also guided me through my seven and a half years of being on council. You're the consummate professional, level-headed. I burn a little hot, so I always would call firefighters to call me down when I was worked up over an issue. Yeah. I did write that one down. Brad, you've raised millions of dollars for Tempe charities. You and Don have done so much work here, not only for your members but for the community at large. Your commitment to public safety is without measure, and that is really what's most important in this city, isn't it? Is making sure that our residents are safe and sound every single night. I've unfortunately had the experience of waking up surrounded by Tempe firefighters twice in my life, and I can tell you, the realization that I am surrounded by Tempe firefighters, I didn't realize, hey, I'm going to be okay. So, now that you're, you're leaving us today, but hopefully, again, this isn't the end of the relationship, but only a new chapter in what continues to be a partnership with Tempe Fire Department, the Professional Firefighters of Arizona, and the city of Tempe. Your successor has giant shoes to fill, and it's all our hope that those shoes are filled, but truly, whoever succeeds you will be standing on the shoulders of giants. So, thank you, gentlemen, for your service and commitment to our city. There's no doubt that you have left the department in our city in a better position than you found it. So I, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate you both. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. Donny, Brad, much has been said tonight about your leadership and your hard work in creating a mutually respectful relationship with this city of Tempe, and I thank you for that. What many people don't know and don't realize is how, under your leadership, many Tempe residents, many, many Tempe residents, organizations, and events were very quietly supported because of your care and concern for Tempe. I have a long list, and I won't read all of them, but I'd like to mention a few so that people can finally learn the extent of your positive impact on our community and understand the breadth and depth of who you have, whose lives you've touched. The Tempe Community Action Agency, the Tempe Center for the Arts, the Don Carlos Awards, the Tempe City All Sports, the Tempe Tardiada Event, and Tempe's MLK Breakfast. You in parts, large and small, played a role in helping us move those events and causes forward. On behalf of so many people, so many lives that you've impacted, and you all did it quietly, I thank you very, very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
I could add one more to that. Brad, I first met you on the Tempe Impacts Education Foundation, and I went to my first meeting, and they were talking about all the good work that you have done and all the great work that the fire union has done in the city of Tempe and what they have done with the Beans and Rice Program specifically. We were talking about that cannot get done, the 30,000 pounds of beans and rice that gets served to our kids in Tempe who need that food would not get that without your help, muscle help and organizational help and everything else that goes along with that. So I just, I have to say, I'm so glad that I got to meet you and got to know you. Thank you so much for all the caring that you have done for our community. There are so many kids out there that are blessed and don't have growling stomachs because of you. And Don, I appreciate so much all of the times that we've been able to sit and talk together about things that happen in Tempe and how Tempe runs and all the great things that you guys, again, as Arlene was saying, being quiet about that. You are a hard worker, a man of integrity, and I am so blessed to be able to have the opportunity to get to know you. And, you know, that's one of the things I love about you is that you have really worked hard to build those relationships within our community everywhere, and I, that means a lot to me. And I just want to say, we're going to miss you in this position. As it has been said, there's going to be big shoes to fill for both of you guys coming up, but I'm just so blessed to have known you. I know we won't stop being friends, but I just want to say thank you so much for everything you have done for the city of Tempe. Thanks.
I just wanted to say too, to Captain Youngward and Donny, as I, as I call him as well, just, when people, you know, Councilmember DeVarro talked about the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department being one of the premier fire departments in the entire state, frankly, it is the premier fire department in the entire state of Arizona, but it's not just in the state of Arizona, it's national. I travel for U.S. Conference of Mayors for National League of Cities, and I hear about the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department everywhere I go throughout this country, whether I'm in Washington, D.C., or Atlanta, Georgia, or New York City. It comes up on a consistent basis because of the stellar work that this department does each and every day, because of the leadership of the people who run this department and the leadership that you've provided. It, I can tell you too, just in terms of, you saw, you know, Chief Reese's words too, it obviously shows just the relationship that you have with him, the relationship you have with our city manager, Rosa Nchowsi, and the relationship you've had with each and every one of us. The work you have done to secure benefits and fight on behalf of the membership of the Fire Medical Rescue Department is going to live on forever. The work you have done on behalf of the city of Tempe and all of the nonprofits, which I know councilmembers Chin and Garland talked about very eloquently. The Tempe Firefighters Charities has done so much good in this community for so many causes. I mean, people in our community who are exceptionally vulnerable, when I think about Tempe Community Action Agency, our three school districts and the work that you've done to ensure that they have the necessary resources to help our children and help our teachers and support their families. I mean, it's just truly incredible work, I mean, that you and Brad have done, and you don't do it for any kind of fanfare whatsoever. It's not to get recognition from anyone, it's just because you genuinely care about the people that you work with, and you genuinely care about this community and the people who live here. And I just can't say enough positive things about you and the leadership you've provided and the effect that you've had, not just on the people of the city of Tempe, but frankly, each and every one of us. And I know everyone talked about this too, just outside of the work that you've done, it's just the friendships that you've built with us that mean so incredibly much. I, a year and a half or so ago, when I went to Long Beach on a cruise, the first place that I had to stop when I actually went there was to Youngward's Bacon Broil to go eat. And I had to make sure that, not only did I have a chance to send Donny a photo of me eating there, but I had a chance to get served by one of his relatives, and we happened to have a conversation. He just said, "Oh my God, you know my uncle." And I said, "I sure do, and he's, he's a great man." And I can't wait to actually- And I can't wait to actually get back out there again and actually grab some more food. I'm telling you, it's some of the best cake and pie and food that you've ever had in your entire life. So I promise you, it is well worth the trip to head out to Long Beach. But Donnie, I just really appreciate everything you've done for this community, everything you've done for each and every one of us. You're an incredible person. You're leaving a truly lasting legacy. We know this is not the end, but it's only the beginning. And frankly, I just have to thank you on a very deeply personal level for what you mean to me and what you mean to this entire city. You are a true friend and someone who I incredibly value, and I just cannot thank you enough for everything you have done and I know will continue to do. So thank you. With that said, I would love to have the council join me down at the front for the reading of the proclamation, and also Captain Youngward, along with anyone else, your family I know is here with you this evening, or anyone else who frankly would like to join us up here, please feel free to join us at the podium. Knowing how many people love you, there's probably going to be a lot of folks who are going to want to join me down here, but don't be shy, everyone. Come on down.
That's how we do it.
All right. Oh, no, I'm totally, I'm not that short, am I?
I am.
So I have a proclamation here that I'd like to read, and I've been very excited to do this. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the safety and well-being of our community depends on the dedicated service and unwavering commitment of our firefighters who selflessly put their lives on the line to protect and serve. And whereas the strength of our firefighting force is amplified through effective leadership and tireless advocacy for the rights and welfare of its members. And whereas it is with great honor and appreciation that we recognize the exemplary dedication and leadership of Tempe Fire Captain Don Youngward in the role of Tempe Local 493 Vice President and President of the Professional Firefighters of Arizona. And whereas Captain Youngward has demonstrated exemplary leadership, steadfast dedication, and a strong commitment to the betterment of the firefighting community for 30 years. And whereas through Captain Youngward's visionary leadership, the union has played a crucial role in fostering unity, ensuring fair treatment, and championing the well-being of its members. And whereas Captain Youngward's unwavering advocacy has contributed to the creation of a safer and more supportive environment for firefighters, promoting professional growth, and enhancing the overall proficiency of our firefighting force. And whereas the dedication and tireless efforts of Captain Youngward have not only strengthened the bond among firefighters, but have also enhanced the resilience and effectiveness of our firefighting services, thereby ensuring the safety of our community. And whereas the city of Tempe expresses our sincere gratitude and commend Captain Youngward for his outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the betterment of the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department and the city of Tempe. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare December 21st, 2023, as Captain Don Youngward Lifetime of Service Recognition Day in Tempe, Arizona." And before, actually, would you like to speak first before? I'd like to invite Captain Youngward to say a few words, but I know, Rosa, I think you had some comments as well. And after that, I'd love to invite Captain Youngward up here to speak to the crowd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few minutes to acknowledge Don Youngward. So being last to speak, I can't think of anything else that hasn't already been said, but perhaps I can share a little bit about my perspective of knowing Donnie for almost 30 years. Brace yourself, sir. I promise not to embarrass you. Just a few photos with bad hair. So I got to know Donnie about 25 years ago, and people may not know this, but as a diversity director in 2002, Donnie ended up serving on the Diversity Steering Committee and actually offering to chair the Recruitment Outreach Committee. And fun fact, he wanted to diversify the fire department, hiring more women. Obviously, that was outreach along with all other departments within the city. So when I think about a character of a man, tells you everything about a man, a person who does this year after year. So two decades, three decades later, he hasn't been any different. Nice picture on the roller skates there, Donnie. There's some I didn't include. You're welcome. But his work transcended just what we knew then about him speaking up and saying, you know what, we need more diversity in our fire department. That came from Don Youngward. It didn't come from your diversity director in 2002. He set the table for the rest of the partnerships before we had this six-sided partnership. As been mentioned, he offered to pay for scholarships for Tempe Tardiaada. The profile of the Tempe Tardiaada scholarships are high poverty, kids living in high poverty who can pay for their college scholarships. He paid for Tardiaada Kids Place, the coloring contest, MLK Diversity Award breakfast, the pride parade. And even when he couldn't attend, that's when Brad stepped in. And Brad, we were a little skeptical about you. We're like, you know, Donnie was the best. Who's this Brad guy showing up now? But you outdid yourself, Bradley. And we fell in love with you and everything that you had to offer for us in the Diversity Steering Committee. And more importantly, not just your members, but this community, you understood service. So I thank you for that. Another thing is the Gay-Straight Alliance, which is now known as Tempe Pride 30 years later, when LGBT was a conversation 30 years ago. So I thank you, Don Youngward, for your service, for your friendship, for being the same man for three decades. That's admirable. For walking into that Diversity Steering Committee, and I'm going to look at Abigail and Brienne, your daughters, and tell you something that I never saw a man happier than when he walked into that Diversity Steering Committee meeting and told me he was expecting Abigail. So and there you sit, right, years later, and get to hear these great words about your father, but know that as much as you admire and love him, he is admired and loved in this community. He worked hard for his members. He fought hard for his members. Some arguments sometimes, as Councilmember Keating said, but it was always anchored in a mission of what's best for us in our workforce in order to serve the best in this community. And he said that time and time again. So I thank you for your service. I know this is just the next chapter, Don, but please know that you are admired for the skills, for the values your father taught you, if I may say that publicly, that you talk a lot about. He taught you hard work and loyalty, and everyone here knows that. So thank you. I think that's about it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Captain Youngward, the floor is yours, my friend.
I'm not supposed, I'm not so sure I'm supposed to show up back to work after all this. This is amazing. These are my closest friends, Richie, you and I. This is my mentor, Greg. You know, we've known each other 30 years. Mayor Woods, members of City Council, City Manager Rosa Nchowsi, my fellow employees and residents of Tempe, thank you so much. I'm truly humbled and honored. I cannot possibly express my gratitude enough. Almost 30 years ago, the city and its fire department took a chance on a 24-year-old kid from Long Beach, California. He gave me a chance to build a career, to help the community, and to grow up. He gave me an environment where I felt valued, supported, and he gave me a place to grow. That opportunity turned into much more than a job. Professionally, it's far and away the best thing that's ever happened to me. Along the way, I got the chance to represent the members of the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department, the best membership and the best fire department in the world. The friendships that this position and this career have given me are second to none. I wouldn't be the man I am today were it not for Tempe and for each of you. That's especially true when it comes to Greg. I still remember walking into the fire academy back in 1994 and meeting you, Greg. You couldn't have seen two guys who were more opposite. We hit it off, though. And Greg has been a mentor and one of my closest friends for three decades. Greg, brother, thank you. The same goes for each of you. Richie, thanks for taking me under your wing. Thank you for the opportunity to serve alongside you. Thank you for the support and your friendship. Thank you for the opportunity to make this profession better for my fellow firefighters and paramedics and to do the right thing on behalf of our residents and our Tempe team, because it truly takes a team. Thank you for the respect, honesty, and care that we've shared for so many years. I don't really love making speeches, but I can't sit down without some final important thank yous. Working alongside Brad has been unbelievable. The most loyal human being I've ever met. I wouldn't have lasted a day in the fire service without the support of my family, for sure. My mom, the best cook I've ever known. She's 87 years old now, and she still sees me as her baby. My dad was my best friend. He taught me so many lessons, like be a giver, hang out with givers, and run away from takers. Also, he said, never argue with idiots, because someone might walk by and not be able to determine who the idiot is. My brother's 12 years older than me, but he's always let me hang out with him and be one of the guys. My three older sisters taught me how to treat women with respect and never, ever to leave the house dressed like that. Nicole, my girlfriend, thank you. Thank you for always listening to me without judgment. Thanks for all the good advice. Most of all, thank you to my daughters, Brienne and Abigail. They gave up so much of their time with their dad to let me serve a department, the membership, and the city I love. I couldn't have done anything without their unconditional love and support. I love you two more than anything. Thank you, all of you, for an incredible 30 years. There's no place like Tempe. I'll always be glad I found it and always be fortunate that this city took a chance on me. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you so much. That brings me to item 5A2, City of Tempe Board and Commission Reappointments and New Appointments. Want to congratulate the individuals outlined in item 7A2 on tonight's agenda on their reappointments and/or new appointments to the City of Tempe Arts and Culture Commission, Aviation Commission, Board of Adjustment, Commission on Disability Concerns, Desert Conservation Commission, Family Justice Commission, Human Relations Commission, Judicial Advisory Board, Library Advisory Board, Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, Neighborhood Advisory Commission, Parks Recreation Golf and Double Butte Cemetery Advisory Board, Risk Management Trust Board, Sustainability and Resilience Commission, Technical Code Advisory Board of Appeals, Transportation Commission, and Veterans Commission. Just want to inform everyone that new appointments to fill the remaining openings on the city's boards and commissions will be scheduled for the regular council meetings on both January 4th, 2024, and January 18th of 2024. Next up, item 5A3. So I just wanted to make a quick announcement here regarding the first City of Tempe and Keep Tempe Beautiful Alley Cleanup. Very excited about this. This is one of the things that our residents routinely talk to us about, those residents who have alleys, is how can the city do a better job of keeping them clean and keeping them free of any trash or debris. And really excited to announce, I know many of you know, the organization that was started by Joe Forte and Paul Quinn, Keep Tempe Beautiful, is now going to be partnering with the city of Tempe to do even more work to keep our alleys clean. And we want to thank them very publicly for that work. And the first cleanup has actually been scheduled. It's going to be taking place on Saturday, January 13th. Are there any slides that we have for that this evening? No? Okay, just figured I would ask. So.
I have slides for the commission members' names.
Ah, okay. Well, that's all right. You, I just wanted to, once again, thank Joe and Paul and all the folks for Keep Tempe Beautiful, for all the great work that they do, and really appreciate the partnership with the city of Tempe to keep our alleys even cleaner. So thank you so much. Item 5A4, which is a very warm birthday announcement to our newly-minted city clerk, Kara. I just want to thank her very publicly for all of her hard work. Her dedication and hard work do contribute immensely to our city's operations and her, and all, I just love having the opportunity every day to go downstairs to the second floor and have a conversation with her and her entire team. They are truly a joy and a delight to work with. They're very hard workers, but they also have a great time down there. So that's why I love to go check them out and see what's going on. But Kara, I just wanted to, on behalf of the entire city council, just extend our warmest wishes for a fantastic day that's hopefully filled with a great amount of joy and celebration. And we are, once again, so excited to have you as our clerk. So happy birthday. Next up, item 5B, City Managers' Reports and Announcements. Madam City Manager?
Nothing else, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. That moves me to Public Appearances, item number six. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards were received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. That will bring me to the cards this evening, once again, in the order in which they were received. And the first speaker I have this evening is Gail Graves. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Gail Graves, and next year I would have lived...
So, happy birthday.[496.88][496.88](APPLAUSE) Next up, item 5B, City Managers Reports and Announcements. Madam City Manager?
Nothing else, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That moves me to Public Appearances, item number six. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the City Council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the City Council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks and from becoming boisterous while addressing the City Council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served in the order in which the cards were received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. That will bring me to the cards this evening, once again, in the order in which they were received. And the first speaker I have this evening is Gail Graves. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Gail Graves, and next year I would have lived in Tempe 40 years. In the year 2000, some developers came to the City Council and asked to build a project on a mountain, also known as Tempe Butte. We formed a group, Save the Butte. Thousands of residents showed you how much we love our little mountain, last piece of Sonoran Desert in this city. And in 2002, it was designated as a preserve. The city removed the towers from the top of the butte because they said it did not belong in a preserve. Shortly after that, I came forward to the City Council, and I asked since it had been designated as a preserve that we no longer allow religious displays in the preserve on the butte. Part of it is, you've got people traipsing past the petroglyphs, on the petroglyphs, installing things, walking through the vegetation, and installing things on the butte. It took about a week for the city to get back to me, and they said that the camels themselves were 50 years old, and they were historic. And because of that, they would be allowed to remain on the butte. So last week, I took my sons up there, and guess what? There's three new camels, and a star, and a menorah. So I first contacted Dave Hayton with Parks, and he said that they had also been a request for them to have a display for Ramadan. So then I talked to the Interfaith Council, and the person I spoke to said, with the separation of church and state, a preserve is not really a good place for religious displays, and that there were 37 religions. And if we let, one, we have to let them all, including the Satanic Temple, and it's going to get pretty crowded up there. There's also the dark sky movement that's been going on. I just came back from Phantom Ranch, and it was discussed down there. And I don't know if you've ever hiked up towards Easter, that gigantic cross is up there. You're shielding your face to see where you're going to get up there. I also noticed that the butte itself was neglected. There was garbage all over the place. My grandson and I picked up two garbage sacks full. There was graffiti near the petroglyphs. Most of the signage was either damaged or gone. And when I had talked to Dave with the Parks, he said there was a study going on. They didn't feel it was proper to replace the signage with old signage, and they were going to update it.
10 more seconds?
Anyway, I'm asking that, and the steps are a safety hazard up there, too. They haven't been maintained. So I'm asking that we come up, it's been 21 years, come up with a day of celebration for the butte, for it being a preserve, and that we also stop any religious displays up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graves. The next speaker I have this evening is Erin Collins. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilman, Verdetta. I had breakfast with her three weeks ago, I think. And it's the same topic. I represent the climbers, mountain bikers, yogis, anybody who actually goes over to Papagoa Park and actually participates over there with their kids, with bikes, with anything. There's just a lot of drug paraphernalia. There's a lot of concern for the way it's being up, Cap. I know that we've recently added the new park rangers, which is awesome. I think one of the things that I'm concerned about as a father who takes my kids out there is, I have a big heart for the homeless. I actually took one of them in for about a year and a half. He's actually just told me he got an A in calculus the other day. I'm stoked for him, right? We've got to help him. But letting them and actually turning a blind eye to them doing things that are, one, illegal, two, harmful to themselves, is absolutely unacceptable. I was a Marine. I was also an Army medic. I would never, ever jeopardize someone knowingly. And turning a blind eye is knowingly. And I think that the more, there's always a place in the budget for helping. I think we just need to find the ways. I know that the CARE, I think the CARE.
I'm on CARE 7.
CARE 7, yeah. I know we have these initiatives, but anything that we can do to ramp that up, to get these guys, guys and gals, help, you know? Not just let them stay where they're at camping. I mean, it's desecrating the land that we're on. I appreciated the remark saying that we're stewards for this land. I mean, you think they'd be happy about that? You know, seeing these people just willfully, you know, it's an inconvenience to me. I'm going to just go my own separate way. We need to make sure that we're taking care of them. I just wanted to make sure that I voiced my concern. I'm actually from Mesa. I didn't mention that. So I know that, I know we're not rivals. We're still in Arizona. But I definitely appreciate the park, and I definitely want it clean. And I appreciate the lady before mentioning the preserve, because it is. We love it. And it's unique to not just Arizona, but across the country. And we say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have this evening is Ann Till. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, Ann Till, Tempe resident. I want to thank you guys for working with Keep Tempe Beautiful on alleys. The first alley is in my neighborhood, and it's been a constant problem for years. So actually trying to do a neighborhood grant on that. And then I wanted to mention, from the forum last night, the candidate forum, which focused on transportation, one topic referred to was density versus transportation, and that South Tempe gets less. So let's do quit ignoring South Tempe. But what will the city do to encourage population and housing growth south and quit focusing only in areas north of the 60? Spreading growth evenly across the city reduces future traffic concentration, plus encourages more business, public transportation, and multi-use paths in the growth areas. Plus, spreading it out would allow more green space maybe in this area instead of development. The vision for safer streets. How are you going to change street configurations to lower speeds? Enforcement can only go so far. As was mentioned, the problem returns as soon as enforcement disappear. So long-term infrastructure changes would help. And just, let's have a comprehensive vision of that. And then for Randy, you mentioned that maybe a voluntary neighborhood association could get grants or loans for safety, infrastructure. But we really have no money. We're voluntary. I think that's what you meant, but anyways. And then Joel's housing meeting, there was a question brought up about what we'd like to see the next couple of years, one or two years. So one of the things, I go back to the 2050 general plan. I have to vote no, because these things aren't fixed. The green building code. It needs a concrete timeline for making it mandatory before March. And growth concentration, like I mentioned, let's spread it across the city. And the 2050 plan really didn't do that. It still focused on this area. Housing, a lot of people mentioned at the last housing meeting, more focus on bringing homeownership opportunities with affordability to the general population. Encourage condos, townhomes, occupant-owned apartments. There's nothing wrong with renting, but homeownership secures housing costs so that residents are not at the mercy of landlords.
10 more seconds?
Yep. Anyways, let's get some metrics, you know, on the last 10 years of what we built and try and improve the homeownership versus renting so that people have a more stable housing cost. And I'd also like to see more done with vacant properties and homes that are dilapidated, because some are just sitting there for years and destroying neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on item number six, Public Appearances? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting and move to item number seven, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. This evening, the consent agenda is listed as miscellaneous items 7A1-5, awards of bids and contracts, items 7B1-7B9, and resolutions, items 7C1-7C8. Any agenda item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. So you think you had 7B1? That's not a public hearing item, but I will remove it myself, just to make sure that you could actually come up and speak, so. You got it? In a couple of seconds. I'll bring it up real shortly, so. Let's see. Were there any comments, Madam Clerk, received from the public wishing to address the City Council on a consent agenda public hearing item?
I haven't received any more.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Council, any other agenda items that you'd like to have removed for separate consideration? All I'm going to do is remove item 7B1 for Ms. Till. Anything else?
No, so moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Councilmember Keating. So once again, that was a motion and a second for the consent agenda, miscellaneous items 7A1-7A5, awards of bids and contracts 7B1-7B9, and resolutions 7C1-7C8, with the exception of item 7B1, which has been removed for separate consideration. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes unanimously, seven to zero. Next up, we're going to go back to item 7B1. And 7B1 is to ratify an increase to the contract amount with titular bice for the development of an infrastructure improvement plan, impact fee schedule, and associated documents. I had a chance to pull this item for separate consideration. I'm going to bring up Ms. Till to talk about this. Please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Ann Till, Tempe resident, 7B1. The contract award was originally $99,000, which allowed it to be administratively awarded by the department, because it was under $100,000. Now it's being up to $249,000, more than double the amount. I don't know why the work wasn't scoped in the original contract. But, you know, I just looked at that. I'm not that familiar with the city processes, but, you know, I wondered what processes are being skipped by starting with the $99,000 contract and then raising it. And as I understand, a contract over $100,000 requires a formal bid conducted through procurement. So it seems that doing this would avoid that. So I just wondered if that was okay. And I don't have an opinion on whether it should pass or not, but it just stood out a little to me, so I wanted to bring it up for maybe discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Till. Appreciate it. Madam City Manager, is there anyone on staff who could actually talk about item 7B1, exactly what that is? I see Michael Green getting up there.
There you go, Mr. Mayor. Michael Green, our procurement administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you, Ms. Till, for your comments as well. Mr. Green, can you explain what this contract is for and kind of to explain maybe how the size of the contract got larger?
Yes, Mayor Woods, council members, Michael Green, procurement administrator for Tempe. And yes, Ms. Till's correct. The city does have a policy. If the value of a contract is under $100,000, then the procurement administrator may award those. And we did that in this situation when we originally awarded it, because our value was under that. And so the contract has been renewed. We had a new amount of scope that came in that was going to take us over that amount. And so, you know, we certainly reflected back on the fact that, you know, we cannot approve that without council approval. So we are back tonight requesting council to approve that additional amount.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone else from council? Any comments or questions for Mr. Green? Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. Appreciate the explanation.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there's no other further comments, is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Hearing nothing else, please vote.
Aye.
Aye, something.
You know what? I will take a roll call vote. Let's see here. So I heard an aye from Vice Mayor Adams. Councilmember Chin?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodge?
Aye.
And Councilmember DeBarrow?
Aye.
That item passes unanimously, seven to zero.
Try refreshing your screen.
The little circle thing?
Yeah.
It does.
The circle thing.
I like the circle thing.
There you go.
Mine's, hold on, your mind's not working here.
Circle thing or the house?
The house makes you do your home page.
All right. Next up, item eight. I'll try to do mine again here. Still, okay, so. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with a disclosure form at this time. First up, item 8A, miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. The only item under the section is 8A1, which is to award job order construction contract addendum number five to Builders Guild Incorporated to perform on-call general construction services. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes, seven to zero. The next item on the next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. The items under the section will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second hearing and vote for item 8B1 is scheduled for January 18, 2024. The second hearing and vote for item 8B2 is scheduled for January 4, 2024. The first item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the partial abandonment of a portion of a public utility easement located east of Maple Avenue and south of University Drive in Tempe, Arizona. This is also a public hearing item, I just realized. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on item 8B1? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none. Once again, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for January 18, 2024. The last item under the section is 8B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 20, Section 2-365 regarding membership on the Tempe Veterans Commission. This is also a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on item 8B2? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for January 4, 2024. Next up here, item 8C, ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. Votes on these items will be taken this evening. The first item under the section is 8C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of two water line easements located on the east side of Beck Avenue and north of the Howe Street alignment. located on the east side of Beck Avenue and north of the Howe Street alignment. This is also a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8C 2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of an existing public utility easement crossing the properties of 352, 354, 356, 358, 360 and 362 South Farmer Avenue. This is also a public hearing item as well. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item also passes seven to zero. That brings us to item number nine, current events, council announcements and future agenda items. Once again, just want to let people know, council members may request that an agenda item be added to a future council meeting during their allotted time, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. This evening, I'm gonna start with Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge a longtime Tempean tonight. Ann Patterson and her husband Bob moved to Tempe in 1957. They moved into the Broadmoor neighborhood in 1958, when it was brand new. They were the third house built on the street, so they've, they'd been there for quite a while. They raised their four children there, all Tempe High Buffalos.
Buffalos.
Ann was very active in our community. She served on our Tempe Arts Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission and she never suffered a fool. And as some staff who may have worked with her know, she was well-known for her probing questions and very direct commentary on most topics. I just want to express my gratitude to her for her service to Tempe and to thank her for treating me like her fifth child. Ann has recently transitioned to hospice care and I ask that you keep her in your family in your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
I don't have any other announcement except that I just wish everybody a blessed holiday and time spent with your family and loved ones and lots of laughing and fun. So have a great time. See you guys next year.
Thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember Hodge.
Yes, I want to start off by introducing my next, my January breakfast of Bernetta. It's on the ADU, which I heard from many people in our constituents saying that they want more discussion on it. So we have a breakfast coming up on January 13th to discuss that. And also, Mayor and I was, we were privileged to be at the opening, grand opening for Mosley School, which used to be formerly Gillen Junior Middle School. That is my middle school and it's named after Geneva Mosley, the lady who I'm hugging, who is 96 years old and was my teacher. So I just wanted to say that, that I love her and it was a phenomenal day to see her get the school named after her. And we lost this week on her birthday, Dr. Jerel Peaton. She was a representative in the, in the state legislature. She's also a fierce advocate for edu, she was a fierce advocate for education and also a dear friend. So I just want for us to remember her. She done so much for us while she was in the state legislature. And myself and Sapan would like to wish you a happy holidays, so thank you. And listen, we gotta do it at one time. One, two, three. One, two, three.
No, I, I know, no, I know, I know what it was. I know exactly what it was.
Oh, I get it.
There we go. Next up, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any announcements. I'll have to wish my colleagues, staff, the public that is here and the public watching at home a very happy and safe holiday. Hope you get everything you want and as Councilmember Garland said, we will see you in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, Councilmember DeBarrow.
Trying to clear my voice. Okay, we're ready. Do we have a slide? I don't know what's up there yet.
Ohio State.
Ohio.
No, we don't, we don't speak about Ohio State in these chambers.
We don't speak about Ohio State in this house, too.
Just want to be, just want to be very clear about that. Go Blue.
You're a Michigan guy.
Go Green.
We're talking, we're talking about the other Ohio.
Exact, Ohio University is all good.
Yeah, there we go. No, I just wanted a big shout out. Probably one of the best proud days of my life, seeing my son start his first college game, official start. Had a great game. They beat Southern Georgia 41 to 21 and there was just a lot of positive things said about my son and I just appreciate all the blessings and the encouragement and his hard work and effort to get this place and more, more to come with him. So keep your eyes out. So thank you on that. And then I also want to say thank you to everyone that has participated with everything housing, conversations that we had for, during the fall process. It was a four-part series. Big thank you to Mark Stapp, Professor of Real Estate at ASU, Irma, I mean, Dr. Stefan Dietrich, we had Tim Birch, Jeff Tamalevich, Ryan Lebec, Josh, Josh Rutherford, Ju Yocum, Captain Hill, Chief Daryl Duty, David Fairbrook, Sean O'Warner, Kristen, or Chris Baxter, all the way down to the city manager, Keith Burke, for being part of those conversations. I have to tell you, the, the presentations, the information that we got from these conversations was outstanding. A lot of people were very curious on what the city was doing and how we were doing it and it was a great conversation and we hope to continue the housing conversation going on down the road, too. So it's gonna be something we always talk about here in the city, so it definitely needs to happen. And then I think one more? Or is that it? Oh, yeah, there it is. Just wanted to give a big shout out to the pile, center volunteers and staff for caring out for our seniors. I think we've all visited there and just seen the activity that goes on there, but especially the activity for our seniors, getting them involved, especially for this Christmas holidays. It's just an outstanding dedication to what we do as a city and caring for our seniors. So a big, big shout out, big thank you to our volunteers over there at the senior center. So thank you so much and happy holidays, guys.
Thank you so much, Councilmember DeBarrow. And next up, Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. One, Joel, I am so proud of your son and you're such a proud Papa. And so congratulations on that big victory and, and your son starting the quarterback. So and I also want to wish my colleagues and all the staff happy holidays in our community and, and look forward to taking on our next year and, and getting even more things done. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Just two quick things. Just wanted to say a very happy 43rd birthday to my brother Brandon last week, which I cannot believe he's 43 years old, which is shocking, which is a sign I'm also getting older myself. And of course, very, very safe and happy holiday to everyone here in the audience and those watching at home. We greatly appreciate each and every one of you and I hope you get an opportunity to enjoy the holidays with your family and take some time off and get a little bit of rest and relaxation, so. Yes, Councilmember Hodge?
I also got to wish my son Jevon, for December 15th, he turned 30 years old and I don't know how he did it since I'm only 35.
Somehow he pulled it off. One other quick thing before we close out, too. Our clerk and our city attorney reminded me, there was one quick error we made in the consent agenda. We approved items 7B 1 through 9, but not 7B 10 through 7B 13. So we need to make sure we approve those formally on the record. So do I have a motion to approve? Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Keating is seconded by Councilmember Hodge.
I did, I.
Let me just go ahead and do this here. I'll just, I'll take a voice vote here. Councilmember Chin?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Councilmember Keating?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodge?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember DeBarrow?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Those items all passed unanimously, seven to zero. That brings us to item number 10, public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council? If so, please come forward and state your name of residence, name and city of residence for the record. Sir, please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Yeah. Hi, Peter B. Kovacs, Tempe, Arizona. I'm the independent registered writing candidate against our fine mayor, Corey Woods. I'd like to compliment the city council. I've only been here for two years, Fordham grad, still looking for John Skelton. Where is this guy? I haven't been able to find him, but he's doing a lot of good things. And my birthday is January 4th at the end of Quanza. So I'd like to compliment the city council. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I haven't been here since we had the big vote on the hockey arena. Blessings, happy Quanza to everybody and happy holidays, happy new year.
Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council? Please so? If, if so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close item number 10, public appearances, which brings us to the all-important item number 11, adjournment. The next regular city council meeting is scheduled for January 4th, 2024. Have a happy holiday and a safe and happy new year. We are adjourned.